Let's go ahead and call the planning commission meeting to order and call the roll.
Kirsten.
Chair Allen?
Here.
Vice Chair Albert?
Here.
Commissioner Carey? Commissioner Walker?
Here.
Commissioner Copper?
Here.
Commissioner Clifford?
Here.
Commissioner Griffin?
Here.
Do we have a quorum?
We have a quorum. All right, our agenda tonight consists of mainly of the deliberation on the Langer Farms Phase 7. Any questions, changes, additions, deletions? Nope. All right, in that case, we'll move to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the October 23rd meeting. Has everyone had a chance to look at those? Are there any? I'll let the record show that Commissioner Carey has joined us. We have a full house. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes of the October 23rd meeting? And are there any corrections, changes? Things you said you wish you hadn't said? Vice versa? Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second would be lovely.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Counsel liaison announcements. Counsel Clark, welcome.
Hello. Well, tonight is the regularly scheduled council meeting, and so we have not had a council meeting between the time our last planning commission and now, so I don't have anything to report for you.
Slackers.
Well, I'm here, so you can't.
Unless. All right, thanks very much. Staff announcements. Jillian.
Is this on? I feel like I'm not.
Doesn't sound like it. I can hear you moving it, but not.
I'll just talk.
Speak closely.
I guess one thing I wanted to make sure I mention is there's an open house for the Downtown Streets project on November 19th at 7:00 at the Rebecca Lodge. And then I also just wanted to announce, I think you guys got the email from Joe Gall that Tom Pestmer has been promoted to Assistant City Manager and I have been promoted to Community Development Director. That doesn't mean that you're going to see me any less, probably. You might see Tom a little bit less after a while, but we're going to transition over the next month or so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Anything else?
That's it.
Questions for staff? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to community comments. This is an opportunity to testify to the planning commission on items that are not on our agenda tonight. Is anyone here to testify on something that is not on our agenda? All right, very good. In that case, we will move to old business, which is reopening the Langer Farms Phase 7 site plan and conditional use permit. I don't need to read the full disclosure, but I will ask at this time if any commissioners need to disclose or update disclosures on any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Has anyone got anything?
Actually, I do. I'd like to read it, just make more clarification here. During the past planning commissioner meetings, there have been discussions about the similarities between Old Town Square Shopping Center in Wilsonville, which is a Graymore development, and this development, which is Langer Farms. I was the landscape architect for Bell Tower, which is a mixed-use building consisting of residential apartments, retail space, and an enclosed parking garage located within the Old Town Square. This building is on the southwest corner of Boons Ferry and Bailey Road. Although the town square is a Graymore development project, Bell Tower was built by Marathon Construction Services, who I worked as a team with architects, Studio 3 architects, and the landscape contractor, Cedar Landscape. I was never in contact or involved in any meetings associated with Graymore development. Also, since Langer Farm does not include any multifamily housing or landscape requirements associated with residential development, I have no conflicts of interest or bias in my participation as planning commissioner. Thank you.
Sound good? Any other updates? All right, very good. In that case, Brad?
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Brad Kilby, Senior Planner for the City of Sherwood. I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time just to kind of refresh you as to where we were at and kind of talk about what we hope to obtain tonight from you. You'll first notice that we'll enter into the record. Now we're at II. So item II, which will be the applicant's closing and final written testimony. You should have received that in the email, and I've also placed it before you up top up there. It's a page front and back, and there are some extra copies over at the back table if the public needs to look at those. After reviewing everything that has been submitted over the course of the last 14 days, staff doesn't have any. Wouldn't change the recommendation from the October 12th memorandum. And the October 12th memorandum, you'll recall, staff recommended approval of the application, subject to deleting conditions number 27 and number 43. Those were conditions related to wheel stops and conditions related to the traffic study. We would also propose that conditions number 14, 51, and 52 be amended, consistent with the language in that October 12th memorandum. Those were related to language. 51 and 52 were related to language provided to staff by ODOT. And condition number 14 was language related to the fact that Langer Farms Parkway is a construction limited street. The applicant did provide some information in the open record period that allowed the city engineer to review and analyze, and so he would propose to amend that condition to make sure that if you so choose to approve this, that the construction that they would conduct in Langer Farms Parkway is consistent with their plans. Tonight, we have Bob Galati, the city engineer, myself, the staff review planner, and Chris Majewski from DKS, the city's traffic consultant. We are available for the purposes of answering specific questions related to the evidence before you on the record. And I wanted to first start by saying that Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Carey had indicated that they wanted to kind of understand what staff looked at in the traffic study and understand, because you have a lot of traffic studies before you. And I think that the traffic study that the applicant has provided and the analysis that has been conducted by DKS and Kittleson and Associates are truly the traffic studies that are germane to this specific proposal before you. And I'll let Bob speak to that. I've asked him to speak to that and maybe, and/or Chris.
They're looking at you like you have three eyes.
Bob Galati, city engineer. Is there any particular question that you might want to start with?
I have one, and I apologize if this is. Well, nothing got discussed last time, right? It just got continued. And this may be here, but it might be in a way that's complex enough that I can't find it. In simple terms, and although I understand that we're not reviewing this with respect to a particular tenant, would a business like Walmart, or a business like Fred Meyer, or a business like Target have been included in the IT codes that were used to do the traffic studying?
They would have. The methodology that was used based on the IT manual, it's a mathematical model that if you choose to use the average number that the IT code gives you, that's one option. The other option is to use their mathematical model and their graphic illustration of that is a chart. And you can actually slide up and down this chart based on what type of density or traffic volume you want to apply. That's the other option of how to do this. Basically, what they did was slide up the graph high enough to cover the situations where other type of IT code designations were covered under their analysis.
So put somewhat differently, are we comfortable that, were we to know that the anchor tenant or primary tenant was Walmart, or Fred Meyer, or Target, or whomever, that they could have used the numbers that were used in this, and that that would have been a legitimate code to analyze their traffic irrespective of which of those specific named retailers you just talked about?
I believe that was our intent when we did the analysis, was to make sure that they were covered. Correct.
By going from, by changing it from 813, 815, 820, all of those, that was encompassing any of those options?
Basically, using the graphic model of the IT code 820 and sliding up that mathematical model high enough on the chart so that the value of the traffic value that was used was high enough to cover all the other.
Worst case, essentially.
Worst case scenarios, we had it covered without having to identify, is it this store? Is it that store? Basically covered them all.
You mentioned there was two ways. You could do this graph, or you could do the average. Does it meet in both cases, or just in that graph?
I believe it all.
Chris Majewski with DKS. I'll try to chime in here. The models and the charts that he's talking about, there's a bunch of data surveys that are done on sites that are out there, all over the US, and they plot them like a scatter plot on a chart. And you can draw a line that's like a best fit line, or a curve that's a best fit model. Where you land on that chart could be lower or higher. For certain categories, the kind of rule of thumb is to go with the average line. In this case, with the size of the development and the shopping center designation, the curve was actually a higher value or a more conservative value. The applicant decided to use that for their evaluation. We had them go through a bunch of alternative scenarios to check the other categories and make sure they were all equal to or less than that value, to make sure it was conservative, and they all checked out. So if they had used the average, there could have been an issue, or a use could have come in that would have exceeded that. But because they used a more conservative approach, we feel that all the different scenarios are covered.
If they use the average, it doesn't seem to make sense. If they use the average, then they might not have been conservative enough.
Yeah, that's why we had them check multiple scenarios. Originally, we weren't sure if they were going to use an average rate or the conservative rate. That's what started the dialogue about these different scenarios. In the very beginning of this project, they chose to use the more conservative approach, and that in turn worked out to cover all the worst case scenarios.
But the average would not have covered it.
It would not have.
Then that makes it more conservative, does it not?
They assessed impacts at a higher level, so that whoever comes in would have equal or less impacts than what they studied.
The method they used assumed more traffic than the average would have.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too. But then you're saying the average, if they chose the average, it would not have qualified. It would not have met the averages.
It might not have.
Because it was lower traffic.
Yeah, if they had done the study based on the average rate, they would have studied less traffic.
Oh. Oh, because you study it on the average rate, not on the, okay. It's not just the model that you actually have to study it that way. Okay. I think I understand.
And one of the reports that we got before, that talked about the traffic, was that one of the scenarios? Because it said there was four studies that were, it was analyzed four different ways. Three were most likely, and a fourth didn't pass. Would that be the one that didn't pass?
Actually, if I'm guessing which memo you're referring to, there was different categories that were utilized, 813, 815. And they looked at the site with a few different methodologies of those different mixes. And the one scenario that didn't pass, I believe a portion of the land use they evaluated with an equation instead of a formula, and it exceeded the value in the traffic impact study by a handful of trips in the peak hour. With the analysis that we're looking at, a handful of trips wouldn't be significant to trigger any additional impacts, and so we felt comfortable saying that it was reasonably consistent with the analysis that had been done.
What about using the IT 851, which is the 24-hour market? Does that have a higher threshold than the 820?
There are a few IT categories that do have higher trip rates. But when we are trying to choose which categories apply, we take into account what's the size of the development and what are the likely uses to come in there. There are some maybe smaller specialty uses, like a fast food drive-through, that might have a higher rate, but you're not going to see 150,000 square foot McDonald's on the site. So we try to pick categories that best represent what they're proposing.
What you're proposing, which we don't know who it is, but that.
But that size of development.
And 24-hour market is like 7-Eleven, right?
Not as, well, except.
Could be.
That's what I thought I read, was that that IT code is for, is like a 24-hour convenience store.
Right, so it could have.
That's not accurate.
But a 24-hour open store, would that not have the same amount of potential trips?
Well, the small convenience stores have a different traffic pattern, because a lot of times they're associated with a gas station. They have a relatively high number of customers per their footprint. When you expand to these bigger box-type stores, 150,000 square feet, that falls in under, it would be a very large supermarket, but it's more of the Targets, the Walmarts, the Fred Meyers, things like that. And there's data on what those generate trips per square footage, and that's what we relied upon.
When we decided to remove the condition 27, which said they had, once the tenant was identified, they would have to go back and confirm based on the exact content that it was identified, that it would work. That was, it was just additional work, that that was why we didn't want them to do it? Because it was, we felt like we covered it already? Is that why we didn't require anymore?
That condition was originally proposed because they hadn't done the scenario comparisons of the different IT codes. And so we didn't have documentation showing those other potential uses would be consistent. Once that analysis was done and showed that it was consistent with the traffic impact study, we didn't need that requirement any longer, because they had gone through all those scenarios already and shown that it was consistent.
Would there be a reason to use it if there is, once we determine who it is, if we left that condition in place, could we not cover the unexpected IT code that we didn't think of? Gosh, we didn't realize it was going to be that. That would have been IT code da-da-da. A really big 7-Eleven. You know, is it a harm to leave that kind of a condition in there if, or even just a condition to, if it isn't one of these three, then it has to be reevaluated?
I'll let Bob speak to that.
I think what we're looking at is if there's a change that's that drastic, then it starts to come under the planning for the conditional use, or whatever they're going to have for this thing. So we'd actually be opening it back up to planning review all over again, and it could require another look at the traffic at that point in time, but I think it would be triggered. The first thing would be triggering is a planning review of this whole thing.
What would trigger that? Just the name of the tenant? A really, really big 7-Eleven came in?
Site plan modification criteria that if they generated, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Once you determine who it is, and we determine the site, that the number of trips will exceed what they had anticipated, then that would trigger a site plan review?
It would trigger a modification to their site plan review if it was something, I'm going to read the specific language to you, just a second.
None of the known, I mean, none of the named what-if tenants named tonight would trigger anything different, correct?
No, but we don't know who it is. The point is, why would we give up that kind of a condition just in case if it was all the same?
Because we don't need to know who it is.
Oh, no. But, right, but if the condition, exactly. I realize it doesn't matter who it is, because that is not what we're here about. But if for some reason it becomes not, would not have been classified in one of those three IT codes, would we not want the opportunity to look at it again?
Well, so just typically, they would have to apply for the modification based on the guys that they're coming in, and they realize, yeah, this isn't what we actually said it was going to be.
It is not one of those three codes. Okay.
So if they come in and it's going to be generating a lot more traffic, then they're supposed to construct the development consistent with the plans that they provided to you, and they're supposed to, it's supposed to operate in the same fashion that they have presented it to you. If we find that it's not, then it becomes a code enforcement issue that we can go back and talk to them and say, wait a minute, you're generating much more traffic than you initially said you were with this use. It was a use that wasn't contemplated in the traffic study, or as a similar type use that was considered under that traffic study, then you're not consistent with your conditions of approval, or I mean, the conditions of being consistent with the plans that you presented, at which point they would have to come in and apply for a modification. And that's a major modification, because it would potentially affect accessways, drives, or parking areas, negatively affecting off-site traffic, or increasing average daily trips by more than 100. So if they propose something that increases average daily trips more than 100, then they would have to come in. And that major modification would then trigger a second review by you, because it, in the sense that this is before you tonight, if there's a modification to this that is a major modification, it comes back to the review body that initially approved it.
Is average daily trips over the entire course of the day, or is that PMP hour?
It says average daily trips, and so I would have to get an interpretation on that. I don't think that we would assume that it's peak trips. Somebody would have to argue that.
So in my mind, 100 trips over the course of an entire day would be a fairly small change.
It'd be a fairly small change, but.
Versus 100 during the PMP hour, which would be a big change.
Correct. And I would also, you know.
Be a lot to trigger it, then.
Right, that's, yeah, that's what I.
I would just add that they're professional developers. They know what they're going to put there, and I don't think that they're going to give you a traffic study that doesn't cover what they want to put in there.
Yes, and that's certainly, there's, I'm not saying that they wouldn't, I just didn't want to, I want to make sure we think of ahead of these things that we, the public is quite interested in the traffic, and trying to cover all those bases as best we can.
So one other element of the traffic, there was a discussion back and forth about the distinction in traffic counts between a quality restaurant and another type of restaurant, and I lose the term of art. I think it was sit-down, high turnover, or something like that. In terms of brand names, could you illustrate for me those categories? Since I assume everyone thinks they have a quality restaurant, right?
Off the top of my head, quality restaurant, I tend to think of that as the place where you're sitting down for a longer period of time, finer dining, and not that I want to name names, maybe you're there for an hour and a half, two hours, even an hour, where the high turnover sit-down, it could be, you go in for a burger and you're out in 20 minutes, but it's not a drive-thru.
So the distinction between, say, Stanford's and Red Robin?
Sure. Yep. And even Red Robin doesn't turn over that quickly.
Right. An Outback and a.
Yeah.
And a Sherry's.
Yeah, Panda Express is a sit-down, not a drive-thru.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, I got it. All right.
Seems like quite a range between that, though.
Yeah. Other questions?
So when we were looking at the traffic, with these number of trips, how's that going to impact, how do we anticipate that impacting the intersections that are currently already there, particularly the 99W and Tuolton Sherwood intersection? Because that can be a bear.
The stack there?
Yeah, the stack. Yeah. When you're talking these numbers, I hear these numbers, but what does that mean for driving kids to school and?
How far back we're expected to be in line?
Yeah.
And how many lights?
So in the analysis, they were, the applicant was required to study that intersection. They count how many cars are going through there today, how it's working today, whether it's working well or not. They document that. And then they are required to look at their year of opening, how much traffic's going to be there, and how much are they adding to that. This study found that the intersection, 99 to Tuolton Sherwood Road, wouldn't meet the mobility standards unless improvements were put in, which is the reference to the Washington County Widening Project. That improvement project has to be put in place in order to meet mobility standards with this new traffic. So one of the things that's important to understand in the timing of all this is, if they built their site tomorrow and their trips are there tomorrow, it would increase congestion until that county improvement project is in place.
And we have a condition that they cannot do it until that thing is in place?
No, there's an agreement that because that county project is coming, it's funded by the county, it's under design, that they're contributing a share towards that project. Instead of trying to get out there and build something that would be ripped up in a year by the county, they're contributing to that improvement project, and then all the improvements get built at once.
But there's a potential it could open prior to that? And they're doing like a fee in lieu of, or a kind of?
Correct.
And that's the Tuolton Sherwood Road Widening? Is that correct?
Tuolton Sherwood Road Widening Project.
And that's from 99W down to?
That intersection.
I don't believe the eastern extents have been confirmed yet. They're trying to see how far their dollars will go.
That's one of the things that we're talking about is.
So regardless, as short as the widening's going to be, you're still taking a road that does not at all work.
Right now, it doesn't.
In the afternoons, and you're just going to funnel it into a wider road that doesn't work. I'm just concerned about how adding that traffic, I agree here, how adding that traffic, we already know now that any time from, what, 3 to 6, you can be backed up all the way to Stark's and beyond easily now. Any additional traffic at a retail, large or big-box retail store is going to have a considerable impact on that.
The, I'm working with the county on their timing for this project of the widening relative to what we're seeing here with the Langer PUD. The Langer PUD is going to be coming online in about, what, a year? A year and a quarter, maybe? The Tuolton Sherwood Widening is probably going to be delayed by maybe a half year beyond that to a year beyond that. It's, there's going to be a gap in there. They are, the Langers are still going to have to do some improvements on Highway 99. There is turn lane extensions that they're going to have to do, not only at the Tuolton Sherwood Road exit, where you turn right on the Tuolton Sherwood Road from Highway 99, but they're also going to have to do it at the Sherwood Boulevard, right turn on to, from Highway 99 to Sherwood Boulevard. Those are, in addition to actually paying into the Tuolton Sherwood Road Improvement Project for their mitigation of that, frontage improvements, et cetera. There's going to be impact. Is it going to be long-term? I'm not quite sure how that, how the timing is going to work. We're still working with the county on that, so we don't quite know. We haven't got it down to a, to an exact date of when they're going to start. We're still negotiating things out. They're still working on their design. And obviously, the Langers haven't even started construction yet, so the meshing of the two projects really hasn't been determined what that gap is. I would suspect that the timeframe between opening of the Langer project and the opening actual construction completion of the Tuolton Sherwood Road project could be, you know, at least a year. That's my, that's my initial reaction.
Does that project, I can't remember, does it include the signal management issues along Tuolton Sherwood, too, and including the Signal at 99?
It does include signal, resolving some signal issues, particularly at Baylor Highway 99.
So the timing. I mean, the big project is for those to be timed.
There is some IT stuff that goes in that's going to mitigate a lot of that, but whether that's done prior to the actual construction of the widening, or they actually wait until the widening project to actually implement all that IT stuff is.
I guess what I'm asking is, is that part of the same project, or is it a separate project?
I think they're going to try and do it all at the same time. They only want to construct it once.
So I think and try aren't terribly comforting words, right? No.
And we don't know how far they're going to make, afford, you know, we don't know how much money they're going to have and how far back on Tuolton Sherwood they're going to be able to go.
Well, they will do frontage improvements along this, because they're paying a fee in lieu of for frontage improvements specifically along this. So we know they'll go back that far, but also I wanted to remind you that there's also other mitigation that the applicant's doing, that these guys might be able to talk to about distribution in other locations. For example, the signalization at Langer Farms Parkway and Highway, or Tuolton Sherwood Road will go in prior to that widening, and they'll also have to make that extension of Langer Farms Parkway north to Highway 99. So that's a second intersection with Highway 99 that people currently don't have or don't use for distribution of those trips. And then obviously, the extension of Century Boulevard. So these are the proposed mitigation measures that they proposed as part of the application. They're also partially included or required as part of the original planned unit development. So there will be distribution of trips, so you're not going to get all of those trips directly going up there and then cutting across and going to Roy Rogers and going across. People that do use Roy Rogers and go to Roy Rogers will go to Roy Rogers. The people that are using Highway 99 will have a second alternative, as opposed to going and waiting at the light at Highway 99 and Tuolton Sherwood Road. They could take the Langer Farms Parkway extension. take the Langer Farms Parkway extension over to Home Depot to that light.
That will go in at the same time?
That will go in prior, that has to go in, that's, doesn't, that's not related to the county's project at all.
And that is-
That's going in now.
That's going in before this is, this is complete?
Correct, correct.
That's something.
Mm-hmm.
That's actually pretty serious. So I have a question. The county has looked at this. The county knows the size of the project. They know the timing. They think they know the timing of their own project. And yet, they are satisfied with the way things are working out, the timing-wise, because this is their road, right? Isn't it Twalton Sherwood Road under their jurisdiction?
I don't care.
So they're okay with this. They have checked this off. Is that correct?
Well, you might, the, the project is funded, and it's on their capital improvement plan.
Right.
So is it funded and approved project-
But the Langer, the Langer application had to go to, to, to the county.
The county.
And the county has said-
Correct.
With these modifications, which I think we've already read, we sign off on this. Is that correct?
Both the county and the state have reviewed and approved this project with the conditions that have been put into it. They've, we've incorporated their comments into the conditions and-
And have they addressed, have they addressed it all or mentioned? I didn't see anywhere in there about there being this lag time. I mean, I think we knew there was going to be a lag time between the time the project was finished. But with these other modifications and mitigations and the queuing and whatnot on 99, the county seemed to be okay with that. And then when their project gets finished, they feel like that's going to be the, the solution?
Right. And let's face it, when that project's under construction, whether this is in there or not, there's going to be some impacts to traffic.
Right, so there's a-
Need a helicopter to get it to Walton in a week.
They have lanes that are shut down, or, you know, who knows how that project's going to be built out, but-
But we're talking about the construction of this and the hassle and traffic with that. We're talking about a year lag time, and then more construction and traffic hassle with the Washington County project.
Again, that's just a gut reaction to what I know as far as my interaction.
Could be three years.
Nobody's got a solid date as, you know, they're still in the planning phase and trying to get designs going. How that all comes out at the end depends on how fast they can actually get agreements along the road to do the work and get their plans finalized. This is a best guess estimate about how these two projects individually are going to work together. And we don't quite have it all nailed down at this point, relative to actual timing of this one starts up and then that one's going. There's still some flex in there. Is there going to be an overlap when, when the, the projects, you know, the Langers are actually online and using the facility and the county is not quite done with their program? Possibly. I think so.
Probably.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Just, you know, one regarding the, the new coals that's coming in. Is any association with that, with the traffic impacts along with-
Actually, the coals' traffic study showed that their impact would be less than the, than the previous existing GI Joes. So actually, based on their traffic study, they're having less of an impact than what was existing.
Other questions?
Is there some reason we can't make them wait to do this project until we have a affirmative answer from Washington County?
My guess would be the answer is that we should probably try to figure out a way to, if, if that's our concern, is to come up with conditions to try to, to try to deal with that rather than just say, come back later. Chris, do you want to chime in on that?
I was just thinking, you've got 120 days, which expires at the end of December. So you, or mid-
120 days to say it's approved, it's approved as long as it is in, it is in line with the timing of the Washington County improvement. That's what I'm, I'm not saying wait and come back later. I'm saying-
That would put us under the moratorium law, wouldn't it?
I don't know. It would create a host of problems. Arguably, that would be one of them. But also, there's a, a line of cases about conditions. You can't condition an application and, yeah, put a, a condition on an application that is either unreasonable or impossible to obtain. And, and what Washington County does is completely outside the control of this applicant. So they don't have any ability to influence the, the county process. So conditioning their application on what the county may or may not do, when that's outside of the applicant's control, would potentially run afoul of those cases, say you can't put that kind of a condition on an application.
It's also a little bit like the circumstance in Wilsonville a few years ago, where they ended up putting in place a transportation moratorium. And there was a whole set of state statute around when you could do that. Because it was the basic same issue, that there were parcels that wanted to develop, and there were improvements to Wilsonville Road and the overpass and all that needed to get done. And they put in place, basically saying what you're, what you're saying, which is you can't develop until those things get done. But statutes are in place now that basically set up a whole bunch of conditions of what you have to do and the length of time you can do that for. And you have to have a plan for how to resolve it, rather than just say, it's up to you guys to figure out. I mean, I, if we were going to go that direction, I'd rather go the direction of making them put in-
There are two significant things, I think, out of that case. One is that the statute refers to a pattern or practice of decisions that results in a de facto, or that results in a moratorium. And what, even one decision can be a pattern or practice of decision-maker and that results. And the other is that it does, the city doesn't have to declare a moratorium. If the decisions have that effect, then you have a de facto moratorium. So I think those, those are the two most significant things that came out of that case.
If we're, if we're going to do that, I'd rather go the direction of having them put in-
What we want.
Specific improvements. Well, no, it would be specific improvements that would be, that would deal with their traffic, that would then get ripped out and replaced by stuff that they wouldn't have paid for because they paid for that, for the, for the larger fix. And that just strikes me as silly.
Can I add to that? And maybe the question, Lisa, that you should ask the traffic consultant and Bob, is somewhat to the effect of, what would be the mitigation requirements if the county project wasn't in line or funded at this point? What would they be looking at? And from what we've heard that the county is, is that they would just have to do frontage improvements along that frontage.
With all these extra trips, all they have to do is frontage improvements?
They would have to just widen. I mean, what they'd have to do with these that they've already proposed, but they would have to widen. The county improvement will improve the intersection beyond what these guys may impact.
Right.
But yeah, there won't be that long time. But short, if, if the county's project wasn't funded and not on the STIP, which is their capital facilities plan for that improvement, that's the kind of question that I'm, what would we be looking at for mitigation? And I think what we heard from the county before they even, when we first sat down and talked with them, it was frontage improvements along this. And it was, that conversation came on early on in the discussion. And really, the county does want to coordinate, because you get a really mad public when you do put in improvements.
And they rip them up.
And then they rip them up.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think ahead to we, to cover bases that we might not think of. And what if it doesn't happen? What if it, something happens and we don't, Washington County doesn't improve? I mean, is there anything to put in contingency-wise? Is there anything, timeframe or anything that, are we just stuck? Or is that unreasonable? Is it such a thing that if it's on the, if it's on the plan, it'll get done for sure?
When the county, when the county looked at this, don't, don't they have the right to say, no, we're like three years away, so in order to do this project, you're going to have to do all of this other stuff? And then they would condition it, and the applicant would, couldn't do those things. And then the county would just have to come in and do some ripping up when they eventually did their project.
Yeah, there's a lot of discussion. We know, though, that this project is going to happen, that the county project is going to happen.
Okay.
It's funded and it's on their program, and it's going to happen. It's just a matter of timing. You raise some very good issues.
Other questions?
So, and then, and just in summary, if that project, or, excuse me, the proposed project that the Langers are proposing, it meets all the traffic requirements currently as-is with the mitigations that we're asking for on 99. Is that, is that correct? I mean, if it gets, it goes in, it's going to meet all the traffic requirements. That's, even though we're going to cause-
Well, they would have to pay that fee in lieu of still.
Right. Yeah, that's what I mean. That's what I mean.
There'll be a year of where it won't, possibly.
That's not necessarily correct. The mitigation requirements established by the state were based on the improvements at Twalton Sherwood Road being in place, plus the mitigation, plus their, their standards for their signal improvements, which are supposed to actually improve traffic flow, given, you know, real-time conditions. The impacts of it not going, you know, of the, of the improvements, the, the county improvements not taking place, I don't believe were addressed because we know that we're doing the project. So to, you know, to say, what are the impacts if the project didn't go through, and we don't quite have a handle on it. What we do know is that with the improvements that the county is producing or constructing along Twalton Sherwood Road and the intersection of Highway 99, in addition to those improvements, the applicant has to do frontage improvements. They have to put in a signal at Langer Farms Parkway at the intersection, and they have to do lane extensions out on the highway at Sherwood Boulevard and at Twalton Sherwood Road that are beyond the county's project. So those two, those three items there are not-
But part of the county's, it would be done at the same time as the county's project, though.
It'll be done, well, the two lane extensions will be done as soon as possible. We expect that, to, to, basically, they're going to have to do that.
Like when they do-
There is going to be a portion of it that will get ripped up at Twalton Sherwood Road. But they're going to have to do the extension of the highway turn lane at Sherwood Boulevard and at Twalton Sherwood Road as part of the development of that, of their project. The frontage improvements, we're trying to wrap into the county project because it makes sense to, to have the county be continuous, you know, basically do the whole frontage of Twalton Sherwood Road because it makes sense. You've got one contractor, one design, one control of the project. The signal installation, that might be a, a timing issue, but that could be coming online with Adams Avenue North extension, which is also a condition of the development, that it basically is constructed before they, you know, before they actually open up. It has to be up and running. So there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle, but to actually say, what happens if the Twalton Sherwood Road project that the county is doing doesn't go through, hasn't been incorporated into the, into the overall thing? The commitment is too great to actually say, no, we're just not going to do it.
It's kind of moot, you know, no reason to worry about it because it'll happen?
It's going to happen. I think, again, timing is the main issue that we don't have a handle on because it's still in that process of trying to figure out what is the, you know, what are the mitigation things that we're dealing with as far as property takes and working through all that, to understand what the, the impacts of their design is. They've got a couple of options still. And they still are working out what those options are finally going to make that configuration to be. But after that, it's set, they're, they'll work it through. After that, the timing is going to be slightly off. I don't see how you can have two contractor, or two complete designs, independent of each other, going at the same time, just happen to be going at the same time.
Okay.
Doesn't necessarily work that way.
Okay. I'm just trying to think of all those things and basically, you know, what if it's five years if we're stuck with?
I don't think that, I think there will be a political issue if it's five years out.
And is there such a thing when you are building, approving things with this kind of traffic, in-depth traffic analysis, that if traffic actuality is different than what was determined, is there some time in the future where it is reevaluated and looked at again and said, hey, this wasn't what the traffic study said?
The trip certificate-
Not particularly for this, but just in general?
The trip certificate that I issue on the, the CAP program allows me to say that if it's significant enough change that I have to go back and reevaluate, then the trip certificate is pulled and we have to look at it again.
Okay, so that's something-
But hopefully, that they've, everybody's been conservative enough to make sure that we did cover it.
Right.
Nobody wants to go back and redo this. We don't want them, we don't want to have a developer come in and, and we actually have to open it up again. And I'm, I'm pretty sure a developer doesn't want to have to come back in-
Sure.
To figure out what he's going to do to get his project back up online. You know, it's just wasted money.
But there is a way that we, as a city, can, can, in the future, if something isn't living up to what it was, the intent was, that we could relook at it. You can pull the trip, traffic thing, and they can, you can ask for further mitigation or something.
The trip certificate allows me to review it if it, if it opened it back up, if it doesn't, if it doesn't work the way it was supposed to, or it starts exceeding the numbers.
So Bob, what, what, what triggers a review?
Again, if we, if we're looking at the functionality of the system, and they come in with something completely different, it's just another, it's almost like an addition to the planning item. It's just another thing that says, oops, you made a mistake.
So you always have that ability to pull that?
Yeah, you basically got two.
Or two email you a year from now and say, this is just not-
We, we have a final site plan approval that they'll have to go through, which is separate of this process. And the final site plan approval looks at actually everything that they're doing to make sure that they're meeting the conditions that you impose. And one, one thing I wanted to add, because I did speak to specific conditions that we've proposed to amend, and those conditions are 51 and 52, those relate to those turn lane extensions on Highway 99. So the applicant is also aware of the uncertainty of the timing on the applicant, or on the county's part. And their hope is that the county program is going to go move forward ahead of theirs or at the same time as theirs. And that's what the amended language would say, is that if the county's process is already underway and they're building that improvement, and it's determined by ODOT that those lane extensions are no longer warranted, then they can open. But if they are not, if the county program is not underway and they're ready to open, then they will have to make those improvements on Highway 99.
Okay.
Other questions?
You had something to say, Chris?
Can I add a little more? Yeah. Thinking about what happens if we get it wrong, does the city have a chance to come back and do something? Sherwood's pretty unique with the, the trip certificate that Bob's talking about and that ability there. But if you step back and look big picture of how we manage the city as a whole, it goes to the long-range planning and the transportation system plan that you have. And refreshing that every five to seven years, we're looking big picture, how's development going to happen around the city? And as all these developments come in, we're constantly looking back towards, is that consistent with what was in the transportation system plan? Are we requiring mitigations that are consistent with that? There's always that back check. If we get something wrong now, besides the trip certificate, the TSP will get updated again. You can reprioritize projects. There's system development charges that help fund other improvements. So it, it all kind of manages itself over time through those long-range planning efforts as well.
So those changes would be city costs at that point, not project, not applicant costs at that point? Because they, there were changes that were, are the-
Could be. I mean, it depends on how you define city funding. System development charges are city-managed, but developer-funded, I would say.
Okay.
Other questions? I've got one for Chris. On, on, I'm looking at the large packet that came out for the October 23 meeting. And it was one of the Perkins Coie's letter, Perkins Coie letters around page 122, 123. They made a couple of assertions I wanted to ask you about.
Is that 122, 123 of the packet?
Of the packet, yeah. It was their October 9 memo, page eight, page eight and page nine.
Number on packet.
Okay. The, the basic question, you probably don't need to look at it to see. They make the assertion that should is different than shall, that shall is mandatory and should is optional. Is that accurate?
Yes. Should is an admonition that you, it would be, we'd be favorably disposed if you did something, but shall means shall.
Okay. So that, I mean, that's something that in that code language where that got picked up, we should flag that to actually take a look at?
Should or shall?
Did we mean, did we, yeah.
What did we mean?
Yeah. Yeah, she's being funny. I got it. And then, and then the other, and this one probably can't get answered on the fly today, but they make, they make some assertions back on page 122 about the notion of the, the language that's getting quoted comes out of our aspirational headings for categories rather than the actual code provisions. We've actually spent a fair amount of time trying to put that in, you know, trying to capture those things as actual code language. This is the old Gene Lafayette issue of the, you know, the hearings officer looking at the introductory language and finding it doesn't have any bearing, even though it's part of the code. Do you recall that issue?
I'm sorry, we were looking at the wrong letter, wrong record.
122?
I would have to see the, the language that there's, that Mr. King is citing to in his letter. Actually-
What he says is, he's talking about, it's his, it's the, it's in reference to the, to the Boyle letter that talks about 1696 onsite circulation.
Chris?
And what he says in his letter, I can read it just quickly. "The passage cited by the Boils, which is the introductory sentence of the chapter of the zoning and the community development code, is not an approval criterion, rather, it's a generalized purpose statement that's informed by implementing criteria." We actually took some care to try to make sure that those, those generalized statements weren't just dicta, right? And that they actually had some force. Is that an area where we maybe need to go back and look at that harder?
Yeah, I think it's always worth looking at. Introductory statements are often, as he suggests here, merely context setting up the rest of the provision. These, you know, the following sentence sets, or following provisions set the standards for off-street parking. And then you'll get a bunch of, but is that first sentence then a standard? Well, no. And then you'll get a bunch of, but is that first sentence then a standard? Well, no, it's, it's more by way of context. But I, I also remembered the effort that you're referring to where we did make a great effort to try to make sure that we weeded out a lot of that aspirational language and made sure that what's in here.
Or had a criteria that pointed back directly to it, to bootstrap it. So that would be another one I'd like to flag for trying to capture that issue as well. And I think in both those cases, there were other reasons that, to me, were persuasive, but I was concerned about those two. Other questions for staff? Yeah, John?
I have a question regarding the stormwater treatment.
Can I ask one more question about traffic?
Yeah.
So just to be clear, Washington County and ODOT are both aware there is very probably a lag of time between the opening of any sort of development and their instituting their, their, their traffic.
Correct.
They're aware that there will be.
ODOT specifically provided a second memorandum to that effect that, yeah, if, if this opened prior to the county's project going in, then those extensions would be required and necessary.
Which is here, okay. And Washington County knows that it's coming and, okay.
And Washington County is very well aware of this project and they're, they're working hand in hand with the designers and the project manager of Washington County. In fact, I think that goes above the project designer at Washington County.
It's the project manager for Washington County, he's working with that, and the traffic engineer, Seth Brumley.
So before I turn to John on stormwater, anything else anyone wants to talk about on traffic?
Yeah, just one, one question, just came to mind. We keep on talking about the traffic associated with, with 99W. How, what's the impact going east on Tuolton Sherwood? Have we? Any comments on that? No, Ray Rogers West, going towards Tuolton.
As far as the, what the current impacts are or what the the future impacts based on?
Based on the project.
Based on the project without actually having the construction of the Tuolton Sherwood Road improvements?
Well, because the Tuolton Sherwood Road improvements aren't going to go much further past DEQ from what I understand.
Probably.
They basically, right now, we're looking at, Washington County is looking at Adams Avenue, or Baylor as the, sort of the part of this project. Whether it is extended down to Adams is based on this project because it has frontage improvements.
Sure.
They may make the connection and just get it all the way done such that the total project improvement for the county project extends beyond Adams as it narrows back down into what's existing.
So you're saying the traffic going the other direction on Tuolton Sherwood?
Yeah, heading east, yeah. Traffic heading east, not traffic heading west.
Yeah.
Yeah, towards, towards, towards Tuolton.
The traffic impact study was required to evaluate intersections further east. For example, Oregon Street at Tuolton Sherwood Road. The county has requirements on what intersections needed to be studied based on certain amounts of traffic. This study looked at those intersections, both east and west on Tuolton Sherwood Road. The, of all the study area intersections, the only one where we had a capacity issue was Tuolton Sherwood Road at 99W if the county improvements aren't made. The rest of the intersections to the east that they were required to study were found to meet the mobility standards.
And there's no possibility that Washington County is going to stop at Baylor and this is going to start at Adams? And there's going to be a chunk of place that no one's going to do in front of?
I would find that kind of a, a problem in, in the fact that you're going to, what, widen the road? Then you're going to have a narrow construction.
Who's going to pay for that? Is there going to be any issues about who's pays for that?
No, I think it's going to, it's going to be a county.
It's going to connected?
The, the project is paying for its frontage improvements. The county, I think, is going to be able to provide the funds to make that connection point between Baylor and Adams. It makes sense.
Making sense, Mary may not mean it happens.
Well, I think the funds, I think the funds, the funds are there for it.
Okay.
Just, just to clarify one more time, they, they did study without any of the county improvements in place. All the intersections along Tuolton Sherwood, Sherwood Road would meet the mobility standards if nothing was done except the one intersection at 99W. So if it stayed the way it is, we just have one intersection that's failing. And that's what Washington County and ODOT reviewed in that condition and that potential overlap of time and said they were comfortable with the certainty of the improvements being in place to mitigate that issue.
Okay, thank you. That's very good, very good.
Anything else on transportation? John, stormwater.
All right, so who should I address this to?
Fire it out there to the ether, we'll figure it out.
They're going to just guess.
I was just curious about any new information about the BPA? Any written documentation on that?
The last I heard and was that BPA and the applicant are talking about what actually can occur and what BPA actually has the legal authority to require of the applicant. So they're still in negotiations. So that's why the applicant specifically during that open record period showed the alternative, which I actually have. It was in the last PowerPoint presentation. One more. This specific location, if I can get this to work. That would affect the parking, right? Oh, I'm sorry. So it would affect the parking right here. And because this is the extent of the BPA power line. And then out here is the PGE power line. So the PGE, they've got to go ahead to put parking underneath. But the BPA, they haven't. So short of having that agreement, they showed this alternative, which still provides the allowed amount of parking and not less, or not more than the 9.3% reduction that they have proposed previously under other alternatives. It would just mean that they would have to reconfigure the parking spaces up by there.
So BPA created the standard after all the other parking that's under their, their, right away, right away got built?
It's unclear because the applicant hasn't been able, if you'll read their testimony, the applicant has not been able to have BPA nail down what their standards are. So it's a moving target, it sounds like. But, and they're basing it on 1951 or 52 as builds for the program. And language from a lineman who said that the amount of electricity beneath that power line is 9.2 whatever, which is not conducive to allowing parking underneath or anything underneath it. But it is an easement to BPA. And there's, it's not clear as to whether or not BPA would be able to require that of the applicant. But the alternative to that is the applicant doesn't want to put any of their customers in harm's way either. So that's why they're proposing this alternative, short of figuring out a way to put the parking underneath there. And that might include either digging, grading down below, lower. That might involve moving the lines. But, you know, the cost of moving those lines is very high because it involves helicopters and all kinds of things. But the applicant has chosen to demonstrate to you that they could still meet the allowable parking requirements, even if they weren't able to do that. And it's very consistent, I don't, with the, if that pond was not there.
My question is also is how the, even with the modifications, how does that encroach the existing stormwater facility? And if they, was, if this was the case, would this automatically just lose? I mean, even with the modifications, there's, there's no reason to, to utilize the existing stormwater facility?
Right. That existing stormwater facility will be moved to the regional facility. That is, if you look back at the mitigation that I showed you just a minute ago, there's a regional system that's being built up at the other portion.
No, I understand that. I know that there were some options originally to either keep this.
Of keeping this or, and it's still an alternative, but the last word we had from the applicant was that they'd had discussions with Target to the effect that they were going to allow them to move it.
Okay. What, what, from the understanding is that no improvements would be made? So what would become of the, what would happen to that area?
I would assume that we would require that they have to, it has to, well, you know, if, any, any area that's left undisturbed has to be landscaped. Whether that's grass or trees, they'll, they'll meet their standards as proposed here. So they could just propose grass. I mean, it's kind of, kind of be up to them. I don't know that you'd necessarily want to just provide grass because that might provide an attractive nuisance for kids to go out and play in the grass. And then you're not really mitigating the problem of having somebody play underneath the power line. So I assume that they'll do something, but we haven't birched that subject with them.
And does this change the conditions, conditions for the 30 space parking?
For the conditional use permit?
Permit?
No, it would not.
It's still go, I mean, it's still asking?
Correct. It's within the, it's, it's within the acceptable threshold of the parking. When you have mixed uses, you can vary the parking and ask for up to a 25%. They've asked for up to a 9.3% reduction in the parking. They can go up to, they could go up to, they could have asked for 25, up to 25%.
Other questions?
I do have one other question.
Go ahead.
I'll make it quick. Yeah, basing the, if, depending on who the tenant is, the anchor tenant, what, what input do they have on the actual design of the facade? I'm sure that they have some requirements with signage and, you know, how they want their building to appear in conjunction, you know, in relation to their.
I'm pretty sure those discussions have already been had. They've proposed what, they've proposed the building elevations. And, and I suppose that the applicant, you know, for example, it says pharmacy or sign here. You know, they can change that sign. But then we don't get into content regulation of signage. As long as they meet the, the size requirements of signs, then we don't limit, or have anything, any say over what they said. But they have presented to you what they wanted the facade to look like, and that's what's before you. So to the extent that that tenant may have some changes that they want made, if they're not consistent with what they've presented to you, then again, they're going to have to come back to us and talk to us.
So, so if the restaurant was a Sherry's and all Sherry's look alike, they'd have to come back and propose some kind of a change to, to?
As long as the Sherry's wasn't constructed out of the materials that they've proposed and shown, shown you, I suppose, yeah, I mean.
Well, what I, I was using that as an example where the buildings all look alike and don't look like what's here, right? If they were proposing something where the tenant said, our building has to look like this, which is not what you've got, that would have to come back to some kind of process.
Right. And to the extent they haven't shown us the exact building, what it's going to look like. They, they proposed a 10,000 square foot footprint, correct.
Other questions? In that case, I think we are at decision-making time. I've got a couple of thoughts I'd like to kind of lay out there. A little bit, partly a little bit for historical context and a couple of points. In the old timey days, maybe 10 years ago, when we talked about traffic, what we would get at planning commission was an applicant's traffic engineer's report, and that was it. We'd look at that report and we'd have to figure out, did we think it made sense? Did we believe it? Did we want to question it? And, you know, the answer was usually some version of, hey, I'm an engineer. You know, of course it's right. And so, and so out of frustration with that process, we put in place the notion of having a city traffic engineer on retainer to provide our own independent analysis. And I, in all of the dust-up around this, I, it's important to me that we not lose sight of the notion that, that a DKS isn't sort of just another traffic engineer chiming in with the applicant. They're our guy, right? They're our traffic engineer who we hire to look at the applicant's stuff and vet it and, and see if they believe it's accurate. And to me, that's particularly since I was here when we didn't have that function, that's a really incredibly important function when we look at, particularly on a project like this where there's lots of, where there, there are lots of opinions about traffic. To me, it's hugely valuable to have our own independent set of eyes on that material to, to be able to, to vet that. The other piece about traffic, this, this discussion, it feels very reminiscent to the discussion we had when we approved Target. And, you know, there were, there was testimony on the record about all the terrible things that would happen with respect to Target, or with respect to traffic when Target came in. And the interesting thing as I've, as I've thought about this is that since Target came in, yeah, traffic is worse at the intersection of Tuolton Sherwood Road and 99. I think that has a whale of a lot more to do with developments in Newburgh and Dundee and Dayton and people living out there and driving through that intersection on their way home from work than it does with, with Target. Yeah, so, you know, that, that to me gives me further comfort when I look at the work that the applicant did, when I look at the work that DKS did reviewing it, and just sort of think logically about what I think is going to happen out there. That, that helps me. There was a lot of testimony about, well, there's a lot of testimony about who is the business and all this sort of thing. And I, I just find myself scratching my head in what I ordinarily think of as a fairly conservative, pro-business community, thinking somehow there's a role for government to pick which stores come to town and which stores don't is just, is kind of baffling to me. I think what our code is about is to describe types of businesses. And so what we're really talking about is a big box retailer. And there's no, you know, that, that by itself, without knowing who it is, has got all kinds of pluses and minuses that go with it. But the notion that we like this big box retailer, but we don't like that big box retailer, just personally to me is not an appropriate role for government to play. And we're government, right? And when we're acting, and when we're acting in this kind of, in this kind of context. So I think our job is to make sure that if it's going to be a 145,000 square foot big box retailer, are we looking at all of the issues around circulation and traffic and those kinds of things? But who it is just doesn't, doesn't enter into that, doesn't enter into that for me. There was also testimony that, you know, with respect to certain kinds of big box retailers that, you know, it was going to destroy some imagined notion of what retailing looks like otherwise. And I guess I would just make two comments. First is, we moved here at about the time some of the biggest retail development was beginning to occur at 99 and, and Tuolton Sherwood, otherwise known as Six Corners, not long after, there really were Six Corners. And, and at that point, Old Town was mostly antique stores. And I have nothing against antique stores, but to, you know, to think that there was some, you know, charming downtown retail with hardware stores and, you know, that sort of, that kind of a notion, that's not what was here. And that's not what this stuff deals with. And, and frankly, the second point is people just don't buy stuff that way anymore. You don't, people don't go to the, to the local neighborhood, whatever. They, they go to larger retailers. And to try to pretend otherwise, when we think about, you know, who's doing retailing and that kind of thing, I think is, is not a, is not a good, is not a good idea. And then the last thing, there was a lot of testimony that I heard ascribing a lot of different motivations to people. And I guess one of the things I've learned in life is that all I can see are what people's actions are. I don't know what their motivations are because their motivations are their own and they're inside their head. In particular, there was, there was a lot of loose testimony about the motivations of city staff and discussions of, well, you know, if they don't live here, they, they aren't motivated to make good recommendations and good decisions and good input to us. I guess certainly if you don't live in a community, you've got a different relationship to that community and that's true. On the other hand, everybody else who we hear come and talk to us has got some kind of an interest, right? Maybe you own competing retail property that you would rather see developed than this property. Maybe you own a house nearby and you'd rather not see this occur. Maybe you own a, a business in Old Town and you think it'll do better because there'll be more traffic. You've got some kind of an interest. I think professional, dispassionate city staff who are able to bring to us their professional recommendations that aren't colored by those kinds of things is incredibly helpful. And I, I just wanted to say on the record, given some of the stuff we'd heard about staff over the course of this, that I appreciate the work that you guys do. I appreciate the value that you bring to the table as, as professionals who have got some professional distance to these decisions and can bring us your recommendations and your input as a, as a tool for us to, to analyze as we, as we do that. So where that all winds gets me to is that I think with the changes to the conditions that we've talked about and the ones that I've been tracking are conditions 51, 52, 43, 27, and 14. I think I'm in a position where I'm ready to vote to approve this.
I think all the parking spaces under the power line should be painted neon electric blue. That's my only comment. I'm just kidding, of course, but I think that'd be very humorous. Okay, go ahead with your thing, James, Jim.
Well, I'm just, what? Well, I'm just, what, I didn't mean to suck up all the oxygen. Are there other thoughts about where we, where we are?
Nope.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to make a decision, I think. I agree with, I agree with you on everything, except it would be nice to know who, who the tenant was, who's the anchor store, just.
Why does it make a difference?
I think it's fair to the citizens, that they know what's, what's coming in, with a project of this big, that's just my personal opinion. Will it affect my decision? No, but I think it should be fair to the decision, to the citizens, that they have a right to know of how it's going to impact their, their community. That's all.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's tough. I think that, I think part of the problem is, is that they don't have one. A tenant. I don't think that they have, I don't think they currently have an agreement with a tenant. I think they're moving forward with the hopes of getting a tenant, but I don't think they've made a formal agreement with one.
Well, that's what they've said on the record, right?
That's what they said on the record, and.
And so.
So maybe there's no one to tell.
I think there's, I think that's part of the secrecy, is, is it's not secrecy per se, as much as it is, is that, that they are looking for an anchor tenant and don't yet have one.
Hoping that they get one before they build. It's a lot of cash going out.
I think that's how it happens.
It's a big project without a. Yeah.
Other discussion? So I rattled off some condition numbers real quickly. Did I capture the correct ones that we've got in the record, proposed modifications?
Yes, sir.
For deletions to?
Consistent with what I've proposed in the October 12th memorandum to you.
Are there any other issues that, that we've not flagged that people feel need to get dealt with?
I just have a general question.
Sure.
The quality of landscaping that was done on this plan, I think we all agreed, was quite nice. Being that this is still kind of a conceptual design, I'd just like to make sure that, that the amount of landscaping, because it does, it goes beyond the current code requirements, if we're going to be able to see that kind of quality extensive landscaping in the actual final working drawings.
Again, what you approved tonight is what we expect to see at the time they come in for final site plan approval. So if their landscaping plan is significantly consistent, or inconsistent with what they've proposed here, then they're going to come back before you. There's a threshold, I can't remember if it's 5 or 10%, but if it's more than 10% variance from what they've proposed, then they'll have to come in through for a major modification. If they're proposing to modify it, then they'll come through for a minor modification up to that threshold of 5 or 10%. And that just means that they need to show that they meet the standards that are in effect at that time. And if they, if they've already exceeded the standards that are in effect at the time, and they bring it down, say 5%, and they still continue to meet those, then staff would approve those through that type of process, that minor modification process.
So, so you're, just to clarify, that they can reduce the amount of landscaping, as long as it just meets the, the current code? Because right now, it exceeds the code.
Correct, and, and again, it would have to, I mean, if they propose to amend the plan that you've seen today, beyond that threshold, I believe it's 10%, then they're going to come back to you, and you'll have to look at that plan again, and they'll have to justify why they're amending that plan. I don't, I personally don't think that, I, I look at Graymore Developments a lot around the community, and they take, around the metro area, and they do take extra caution and care, because they tend to own the land and then lease the businesses. And I think there's some value, intrinsic value on their part to maintain those sites so that they can maintain their tenants for long periods of time.
Anything else? Are we ready for a motion? Jim?
I move the Planning Commission approve the application for the Langer Farms Phase VII Shopping Center Site Plan 12-05 and Conditional Use Permit 12-02, based on the applicant's testimony, public testimony received, and the analysis findings and conditions in the staff report as amended.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Can I just add one thing then?
Please.
So we'll reduce this to writing for your signature, probably tomorrow, and then just for the public and those folks that are watching at home, there'll be an appeal period, 14-day appeal period, to which people can appeal this to the city council, after it's been reduced in writing and mailed out.
Very good. All right, next meeting is the 13th. Do we have an agenda, or do we have items for that meeting?
Right here.
Yes, you guys.
Oh, the packet that we got, right. I will not be able to be at that meeting. Do we? Mike, were you?
I'll be in attendance.
Right.
I don't see why I wouldn't be here.
I believe so.
Okay, so we should be all right for form? Okay. All right. All right, any other business tonight? If not, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.